David Burris, J.R. Huddleston.
Here.
Deborah Johnston.
Here.
Bill Lukens.
Here.
Melissa Niles. Larry Pratt.
Here.
Craig Romi.
President.
Linda Varvel.
Here.
Thank you. Would you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? All right, a couple of reminders, counsel, as always, conflict of interest, if you have one, please let the rest of the council know before you vote. And our occasional reminder, the microphones are your friend. Get up close and personal with them. Make sure that the audience can hear you, plus when the folks watch us on our minutes, council meetings, they'll be able to understand what you're saying. Need a motion to approve an amended agenda. I'm going to add a personnel action. It'll be Personnel Action A, so all the rest of them will drop down. So we'll have Personnel Actions A through P. But the personnel, new Personnel Action is for Kevin Ruhoff, a full-time wastewater maintenance operator, Step 2, 1177 an hour, effective April 6, 2023.
I make a motion to approve an amended.
Hang on a minute, we've got one more. And removing New Business Item C. That's the agreement with the Hot Springs Youth Soccer Association. Got a call from one of the gentlemen with that group, and there's a couple of changes they still would like to advocate for, so they'll get together with Jeff, and we'll try to get that back in front of you on the April 17 council meeting. So new amend personnel to add Kevin Ruhoff, and remove New Business Item C.
Okay.
Did you spell that last name?
All right, now I make a motion to approve an amended agenda. Adding Personnel Action A, Kevin Ruhoff, full-time wastewater maintenance operator, Step 2, 1177 an hour, effective 4/6. Moving all other personnel from, down one, it's now A through P, and removing New Business Item C from the agenda.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Need a motion to approve the minutes from the March 20 council meeting.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from the March 20 council meeting?
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. A motion to approve the bills in between.
I make a motion to approve the bills in between in the amount of $111,546.74.
Second.
Did you pick one, Misty? Larry, I heard Larry, but he pointed the bill.
I stopped, I stopped. It's Larry.
All right. Discussion.
They're fighting over it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. A motion to approve the current claims.
Make a motion to approve the current claims, $126,284.70.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Motion to approve the Wells Fargo credit card claims.
I make a motion to approve the Wells Fargo credit card claims of $6,508.40.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Next item on our agenda is an Earth Day month, April 2023. Office of the Mayor, Hot Springs, South Dakota proclamation, Earth Day month, April 2023. Whereas Earth Day was first celebrated on April 22, 1970, with the goal of inspiring and appreciation of our nation's natural resources through conservation and protection. And whereas, celebration of this day marks an annual review of and commitment to the principles of that first Earth Day. And whereas, Earth Day marks a renewed commitment to environmental stewardship and to the implementation of sustainability and regenerative efforts. And whereas, the global community now faces extraordinary challenges such as environmental degradation, global health issues, climate change, food and water shortages. And whereas, it is understood that the citizens of the global community must step forward and take action to create positive environmental change to combat the aforementioned global changes and preserve it for future generations. And whereas, the City of Hot Springs celebrates Earth Day by extending it to the month of April in recognition of the commitment to environmental stewardship. And whereas, the City of Hot Springs businesses, organizations, and government agencies are encouraged to acknowledge Earth Day Month through education campaigns, programs, promotions, policies, and activities. And whereas, the City of Hot Springs residents are encouraged to implement practices designed to preserve and protect our environment and our unique magnificent natural resources in the Black Hills. Now therefore, I, Bob Nelson, Mayor of the City of Hot Springs, do hereby proclaim the month of April 20, 2023, as Earth Day Month from this year forward. Access to communications from the public. Don Ackerman and David Gates. David, you're with us. You're sort of tallish, so you might have to either adjust it or just take it out and And for the record, if you'd state your name and address?
Dave Gates, Rapid City, South Dakota. I am the president of the board for Veterans Helping Hands Project, who has been in the process of trying to set up a factory down here for three years to take the veterans out of the drug and alcohol rehab program while they're in rehab and getting them job skills. We have a list about this long, carpenters, electricians, and everybody that want to train these guys and get them job skills. This will be the only one in the nation that's going to be doing this.
Well.
That's sad. It really is. This is going to be the only VA hospital in the nation. I talked to Roger Wolpel about it. I said, is this the only one that's going to do this? Yep. The only hospital in the nation that's going to have its own OJT manufacturing facility. Not next door, but in the same town. The only one. So you guys, there's something coming. Okay, but what I'm here tonight about is initially, we started the conversation with the mayor about a three-acre piece of land out here by, on the city well land out there across the road to put some veteran housing in there. But in the meantime, Don Ackerman donated 10 acres of land. So now we're set on the land for the factory, the sawmill, and the veteran housing there. Now that veteran housing will be set aside for guys who have come out of the rehab program and have been trained, and they want to stay here, and they want to get jobs. We're going to create an industry here. We're going to create crews out of our factory, like landscaping, building decks, whatever. All kinds of stuff that would be fairly simple for these guys to learn here in town to create an industry, to create work, create jobs. Done a lot of studying for grants about the Hot Springs area, and probably the two things you need the most are housing and jobs. Seems to me, just my opinion, but. So we're going to do what we can to help with the job situation. Now this, on Don's land, it's going to be a veteran housing development for men. I would like to present to you that three-acre piece of land out there, I can't think, was it Coldbrook, out there by the city well?
It's Hotbrook.
Hotbrook, okay. On that three-acre piece, there is one acre that we can use where the drainage will flow away from. I was going to make more, but burned my ink cartridge up, something terrible. But what this does, it shows, the duplexes that we have designed, we got the blueprints and construction drawings done, all ready to go. We're working with South Dakota Housing on a lot of that stuff for the men's development. We'll see if they have money for a women's development when the time comes. They just seem to get a whole pile of money down there, and they like to help. You know, so anyway, what this shows is three duplexes around a septic system which flows to the southeast, away from your city well. So we won't interfere with your water or anything like that.
Is this on the left side of the road?
Yes. Let me give you this one. It shows the well. I think I got this from Anderson Engineering. I'm not sure. But anyway, it's the little piece right across the road from the city well property.
Okay, this is where you're going.
So basically, I guess what we were talking about is, in essence, if, it's not going to happen right away because we've got a lot of stuff going in front of it, but within a year and a half to two years, we plan on putting a small women's, homeless women's, veteran housing in there, three of them, okay? And if you're wondering why it's only three, it's because Belfour's tried this. In 2011, they put in a homeless women's veterans center, building, 24 beds, and they couldn't fill it. They closed it down in 2013 because they couldn't fill the beds, there's not enough women, veterans, to do it with. Now, we might not be able to fill it with six, but we could probably fill it with four and convert one of those duplexes into a single-family dwelling with three bedrooms for like a single mother and her kids. So I don't know if we're going to be able to find any more women veterans to be able to do that with. What we want to do with this project is the ones that will live in our housing will be ones who have been through drug and alcohol, or have been through Rapid City, they have what they call a Vet Court, Second Circuit Court. They have a Vet Court, what it does, if the veterans are in trouble, they'll give them an option to get a job, dry out, report to the court, or go to jail. Okay? And the last time I was there, half of the veterans that were in there were women. So we might be able to pull some women from that to come down here to go to work in the factory, and we got the housing for them. In a nutshell, basically what we're talking about is see if it's possible, if you guys, if the city could donate that land to us for the project. In a nutshell.
All right. Counsel, do you have any questions for Dave? What grants have you looked at, you said?
Right now, it looks like HUD is only going to allow $648 a month rent.
Right.
And that's 2021 schedule. So I stopped to go to housing, was looking in to see what the schedule is now, but I haven't heard back from them yet.
So if they go to the CWT program, can't be placed, this is with the CWT program, or is this after the CWT program?
After the CWT, when they come out.
Right.
And then what the community will do at that time, and we'll discuss about this as we get closer, happening and everything. In Rapid City, I have 19 groups who want to come alongside the veterans who want to go to Rapid City, like Health and Human Services, Youth and Family Services, Consumer Credit Counseling, the VA, National Guard, Vet Center. You have a staff person, and I'm going to have to find out, maybe you know who he is, but he's with the Small Business Administration, it's called the VBAC, Veterans Business Opportunity Center. They're out of Fargo in this district. They put a staff person here in Hot Springs a year ago, and I don't think anybody knows. Yeah, I'm going to have to call Fargo to find his name, I guess, to find out who he is, to get together with him. But they want to help these guys get into business and succeed, guys, gals.
Right.
To succeed. And the, I don't know if you know who Larry Zimmerman is? Larry's on our board. And he's also on the board for Native American Housing Coalition, I think it is.
Coalition, I think so, yeah.
Yeah, Coalition of Native American Housing.
Right.
Right. And so what we want to do is, there's, we have nothing against anybody creed, color, whatever, coming in and going to work in this factory. It's, the more, the better, okay? So we're open to, and Tanny, or Tony, Tony Brunch is on our board, even though she's busy and doesn't take much time with us. Probably mainly my fault, but anyway, so we're open to have that happen. But the one thing, we're going to say for everybody that comes in the door in our factory, if you fall off the wagon, you can't stay here. Now, the mayor in Rapid City thinks I'm a little hard, but the reason I say that is because Alex Purcell with, Paying the County Health and Human Services, was telling me that they have a big contract to a small apartment complex by the library in Rapid City, second floor. That's 12 vets, probably. 12 vets. And they're, they're, they're off of drugs and alcohol, they have jobs, they have covenants that they have to go by with Paying the County Health and Human Services. One guy fell off the wagon and took the whole floor down.
Yeah, it can happen.
So that's why we have to be a little bit of a stickler on this stuff. You know, these guys that are in there are kind of, these guys and gals that are going to be in here are going to be tender, tender, let's put it that way. They need to be supported, and they need to be taken care of and sheltered for a while until they start toughening up a bit and get out into society. Does that make any sense?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
I went through the program in 2007, still doing the deal. As far as what you're wanting to do, I can't speak to the rest of the council, but I can tell you that, first of all, they've got to do it, they've got to want to do it. You know, it's a choice, it's not just a decision, it's more, it's a choice. To me, if there's a chance, no matter if it's here or if it's anywhere somewhere else, if there's a chance for a program to keep the mind, the body, and the spirit occupied, that's exactly what I needed, because I didn't need to be with me. So if you know, you know what I'm saying.
Right. The one thing Roger's told me at meetings that we have, we're on the same committee for Black Hills Recovery Coalition. He said, if this program's on the street and running, he's going to advertise it nationwide. Okay? And try to get as many veterans to come here to the CWT program here, because we're going to be the ones giving them job skills, getting them back out.
Right.
To be able to get them back into life. And I guess, talking to Larry, he was saying they do have some beds over there at the domiciliary set aside for women, too, I guess.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure, yeah.
They do?
Yes.
Yeah, but we need to work on that.
All right.
There aren't very many, but.
Well, you know, that's something that we'll work on. We'll work on that, see if we can get them in there, because some of the things that I have to be able to teach, I had a show on TV called Dakota Sportsman TV, and I want to bring it back out again, to be able to teach the people, give the people of the United States an awareness of what the veteran situation is like, okay? And I don't want to film it anymore. I want to teach somebody to be able to do that. Teach them camera work, teach them video skills.
David, I want to give, I'd like to give the rest of the council opportunity to ask questions. We try to keep, you know, comments from the public to five minutes, but it's important that, you know, council has enough time to ask you questions. I do have a couple of questions for you myself, depending on what the rest of the council, if they have any questions for you.
So do you plan on the group actually building these duplexes?
Yes, yes, ma'am. That's part of the training.
Nice.
So why do you want to build it so far out of town? These homeless people don't have rides around, and that's a heck of a walk.
Roger said that they will transport them to work and back.
Well, I'm talking about if they're living, if you can get this land from the city, if they're living clear out there, what, the VA's going to transport these women?
Oh, no. No, we'll have to work something out, maybe get them a van or something, maybe get somebody to donate a van so they can kind of shuttle back and forth. That's what we're going to do with the women, with the men, too. So I understand that. They're making us put carports on everything, even though nobody's going to have a car.
Anyone else? David had mentioned that we'd been in conversation about this particular spot. David and I had chatted a year, year and a half, two years ago about some, you know, if the city had any property, and I said at that time that we didn't have anything, you know, within the community that, you know, we could consider. Don Ackerman became aware of this property, and Don approached me two or three weeks ago asking about the possibility of the city donating it. I said, that's not my call, that request has to be put in front of council. If this is something council wants to look at and consider, you know, they won't have to see, can we do it? How would we do it if we can? My question, one of my, I guess my only question to you, David, is, you know, if this were to happen, and the council is able to and agrees to donate the land to you, when would you begin construction?
It will be a little while, because we have, South Dakota Housing has set aside $700,000 for us for the men's project. And so that will come first, about the 1st of July. And then the plan is to go ahead and build a factory and get here running, and then do the women's. But we'll see, we'll have enough guys on crews that we'll be, probably going to be able to do it simultaneously along with something else, we just don't know where yet. But, you know, if you're thinking it's too far out, if you have another piece closer to town that you have that you control, we'd be open.
Don's property is quite a bit out of town also, right?
Two miles away from the hospital.
Okay.
Now, is Don in the city, the county, or is he in the Custer? I think it's in.
It's in Fall River.
Right.
You can see the county line, you see the Highline Towers from the property, so it's still in Fall River, yes.
And that area is probably about two miles out, Hotbrook, too, because I think all the way to the end is like four miles.
Another thing you got to consider, that road right there in winter time, I drive school kids home out there by Hotbrook Estates, it can get pretty rough out there, so that's something else. I mean, I'm not deterred, I'm just, you know, letting you know.
But we'd be open for another piece that we could put the three duplexes on closer or in town or something.
This one out in Hotbrook, where it's drawn on this map, is where you didn't want nothing built, Bob, because it's on the north side of the property, right across.
No, it's on the south side.
Not here. This is, this is where we was looking at. This is drawn here, is that where they want it?
No, it's on the south side of that bunch of trees, from what I saw.
Yeah, the, this is the north side.
I know, but what's this drawn here for?
Well, that's what he's talking about, right here.
Yeah, that's.
By looking on Google Earth, by all the elevations, it looks like that housing, kind of like hits the ridge, and then kind of goes down to the south, goes down to the southeast on that side. Everything else is going this way, except for that one acre along the road, it goes down to the southeast, drains away from it.
Okay. We obviously can't give you an answer tonight.
Yeah, I understand.
We understand, at least I understand, everybody else got a good understanding of the requests that they put to you?
I know this plan has been, or this goal has been, one of the plans since the Save Our VA started up in 2011. That came out of those work groups, if I recall correctly. So I have to give you kudos for your perseverance and all of the work that I know you've been doing to come up with this.
Been a long ways down the road, but that's okay, it's getting close.
Yeah.
All right. So we'll figure out which committee we'd like to have, you know, take a look at this, and then can talk with council and see what their appetite is for.
Okay. All right, and you know how to get ahold of me?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks for your time.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for what you're doing with our veterans.
Welcome home, sir. Anyone else like to address the council? All right, we'll move on to council updates from our Public Works Engineer, Tracy. Road project update?
This might be almost at the right height there. Well, good evening. Spring has been postponed until further notice. Maybe next week. The latest on the road project, the month of March, of course, with some of the weather delays. The main thing, I believe, that we have seen completed since last month update is the sanitary sewer line on North River Street has been completed up to the same general location as where they completed the water main. They pretty much have all of the storm sewer put in. I think they might have just a little bit of finish up left to do. There again, the weather has really kind of put a hindrance on what they can do. As far as further south, of course, the university intersection is under construction. There again, that's been delayed here the last few days with all of the weather. One of the things that no doubt you may be getting calls from constituents is regarding how rough, you know, how rough the road is. I am aware as of today, email from the state, from DOT, that the prime contractor, Complete Concrete, has taken full responsibility to maintain these areas that have the temporary surfacing. So they were out and about today, trying to make some improvements on it. It's actually very difficult, North River Street, which has the millings. The millings are nice until they get potholes in them, and then it's extra hard to grade those out. But they are going to be much more diligent on trying to make these areas a lot more passable, as they are definitely very rough. Other updates in the last month, the city water department moved a fire hydrant there in front of First Interstate Bank. That was accomplished, that needs to be done, because the sidewalk in the road is changing somewhat in there. We also removed and capped off a fire hydrant that was there directly in front of the Lins Dakota Mark Gas Station. That really was a redundant hydrant, because the one at First Interstate is only about 150 feet away, and then there's another one over on the corner at Canton, it's also only about 150 feet away. So we really had spacing there that, and besides that, fire hydrant was also going to be in the way. So they got that taken care of. When the weather becomes a little bit more conducive to construction work, we do have some valves and things along the route, the South Chicago Route that will be changing. And I guess that's pretty much where the road project stands right now. I'll take any questions.
I didn't capture when the weather becomes more conducive to construction, you have some what's?
Oh, there are some valves.
Thank you.
That we're going to be changing.
Thank you.
I'd like to add to what Tracy was saying, as far as the contractor being responsible for the repairs of the road along Chicago and North River Street. I did get a call from Scott Donnelly, he's with Complete Construction today, and said, a call from Scott Donnelly. He's with Complete Construction today and saying the same thing that Tracy said. They recognize that they need to step it up a little bit. And they did have a crew working on, between University and Albany today. They're going to have a crew here tomorrow. And then they're also looking at how they're going to manage it during the weekend if it, you know, depending on what the weather does. So, they have taken ownership that it's, it's road under construction and they need to make sure that it's passable. Thank you, Tracy.
Thanks.
Thank you.
We got an email from Olivia asking to be pushed to the next council meeting. So that takes us to personnel, remembering that we had a change in personnel. We had a new Personnel Action A for Kevin Ruhoff. And then that pushes everyone else down to, down one letter to P. So if I can get a motion to approve Personnel Actions A through P.
Make a motion to approve Personnel Actions Items A through P.
Second.
Discussion?
This new hire, we heard him at Step Two, 17.
Tracy?
Get back here.
Yes. If you'd come back to the microphone, please.
Can you run fast enough, Chris?
By the way, I have to abstain from all this, but I do have to ask this question. Is Kevin at Step Two? He has, he's got any certification?
He has CDL. Has Class A CDL.
But he's working in sewer?
Yes, but we require a CDL.
Yeah, I know that.
Yeah.
But does he have any experience in sewer or anything like that?
Not yet.
We're starting him at Step Two because he has a CDL?
That's...
With no experience in the sewer, why are we starting him at Step Two?
I support it because he has a CDL, yes. And we're having a real hard, tough time getting folks in there anyway, so.
Absolutely.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you.
Fast.
Okay. Now run fast, Chris. Walk slowly.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
Y'all know I did have to abstain, right?
I'm sorry?
I had to abstain.
Thank you. I didn't catch that.
Can you say why?
Because my grandson's on there?
Okay. Well, we're supposed to say why. So I just thought I'd remind you.
Because I wanted to.
Onto new business, Item A, a discussion only to begin the 2023 Fall River Flood Channel Maintenance Work, approved by council in June of 2022. Included in your packets, as Misty didn't include your packets, an artist rendition from ISG. This same river rendition was provided when they designed the suspended sidewalk for us. Just to give everyone an idea of different possibilities for what our river can be, other than just a channel for cattails. In looking at this, you can see some of the elements that we've been working towards to get the river back to much more usable. There have been a lot of discussions about protecting the environment for turtles and other critters down there. I'd like to protect the, the environment, also have our ducks come back. It was very pleasurable to see the ducks and the ducklings along that river. And strictly with the, the cattails, I think we may get closer to that, but this certainly would be a lot closer to it. Tracy's often said that ducks are not helicopters, they're gliders. So they need a lot of open space and a lot of open water to use. So I just wanted to provide that. I also wanted to update council that if you remember when the Fall River stewards, am I saying that correctly?
Yes.
When they addressed council last year, they had talked about some hybrid weed eaters that are specific to cutting underwater vegetation. And they thought that would be a good opportunity to manage these cattails better. Took a look at what they were recommending and it really is a very ingenious product. So the city went ahead and purchased four of them. Whether they do it or whether we do it, the work, it's, it's got to be done. And these look like items that would allow our people to do it easier. So, we have those in hand. We're ready to get going. I just wanted to remind you folks that we did approve the Flood Channel Maintenance Work last year and working along North River Street wasn't at the top of the list that you approved. What was is the section of the river from University to Jennings. That still needs a lot of work down there. But our suspended sidewalk, if everything is on schedule, the towers, we're told will begin going up around July. So, we should be getting seeing that, our new sidewalk being constructed. And we need to get a handle on the growth that's happened on, on the section there on, on North River. Didn't expect the weeds to come back as quickly as they did, but they, they certainly have. We've also, in Public Works, talked about getting a, an irrigation system coming from Centennial Park to water the area down there by the river. And looking at how we're going to fund that. Just want to let you know that spring's upon us and we'll be getting back down in the river and getting it taken care of. Any questions on that? All right. Onto new business, Item B, approve and authorize the mayor to sign agreement 2023-8.
Make a motion to approve and authorize the mayor to sign agreement number 2023-8 with George Porter for Code Enforcement Services for 2023, replacing previously approved contractor Jamie Olson, which was canceled.
Second.
Who, who, who's George Porter? Who's that? He isn't the one we hired originally, evidently, huh?
No, no. He's, he's new to the area. He's a retired, I forget, contractor or something, but he's, he's new to the area.
And we still have Joel Johnson.
Yeah, we still have the big one, which we're going to try and get away from this year because we're honestly not getting anything out of that contract.
Oh, this George is the city employee?
No.
No?
No, contract. We're asking to contract him, the same as we had with the previous young lady.
Is this the gentleman out of Custer?
Yes.
So we could have him and the other guy we hired going around town finding stuff?
So, as I explained before, Craig, with this contract, we've not taken, we've not gotten a whole lot out of, aside from the initial inspection and some of the, and the basic templates for the letters, we have not taken advantage of. Is it Joel, I believe? The contract that council approved two years ago. So that contract, I hope, goes away. Now that we know the process, we understand the letters, we go through all that, that'll go away. And now we can do this, just basically piecework. So we have somebody going around locally to take a look at the, do the inspections.
Isn't that guy hired through the whole year?
He's on a long-term contract. We don't have to, we can use him for zero or the whole amount of the contract. So, as it stands right now, we have not been utilizing his services at all.
We haven't been using Jamie Olson, is what you're saying.
I'm sorry?
We haven't been using Jamie Olson, is what you're saying.
I'm sorry.
We haven't been using Jamie Olson?
Jamie, her last name wasn't Olson, was it? Oh yeah, maybe it was.
I'm not sure.
But no, we have not used her. It's, her contract's been canceled.
Right. I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
So, is this guy going to make the same money?
Five dollars per inspection.
Five dollars per inspection.
Okay.
Has he seen this contract with these terms?
He has seen the contract.
So, in the motion, Jeff, approve contractor Jamie Olson, replacing previously approved contractor. Okay, all right. I'm following now.
I'm hard to follow, Mayor.
No. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. We removed new business item C from the agenda. So that takes us to new business item D, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the facilities use agreement 2023-10.
I make a motion to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the facilities use agreement number 2023-10 between the city and the Hot Springs Youth Baseball Association, transferring program responsibility.
Second.
Discussion. Jeff, this one yours?
Yeah, let me, you have a, an alternate copy of that. There were some 11th hour administrative changes that the board directors for that group came in with after we had produced the, the contract, or excuse me, the agreement. I will, I left off the agreement number, which is, this is agreement number 10. Essentially, I think that in, in reading through, the red notes are what they asked that we add. They don't change the content of the contract at all. I think the big thing is they clarify that their, their responsibilities are only during baseball season, which in some ways is common sense, but I think they just wanted to ensure that they weren't responsible for other parts of the, of the year.
So the only equipment they're going to use is the program equipment?
Yes.
They ain't using any city equipment?
Well, we essentially don't have very much, really any baseball, softball, baseball equipment. There's some out there they are going to use, but they are providing essentially their own.
Well, I'm talking about like, big mowers?
Oh, no, no.
Tractors, stuff like that, no?
Right.
Okay.
Are they going to sell, are they going to sell food?
Yes.
So they'll get a permit for that, or?
I'm sorry, go ahead, Larry.
Do they have to get a permit?
Yeah.
Sell food?
What this agreement does, it doesn't negate any of the requirements for them to have permits and tax and all those kinds of things. Essentially what it does, it allows the private organization, we've got several of these, soccer is the other one right now. Essentially what it does is it allows a private organization to carry out a municipal program that would normally be carried out by us. We don't have a recreation director and probably will not have one for the summer, the way it looks. So, essentially this passes on to them all those, the rights and responsibilities of that program. They can do, they, they maintain their own receipts, they maintain their own concessions, they can do sponsorship if they want to, and banners and all that. One of the, one of the things that has been kind of consistent throughout these agreements is they have to come to council once a year to get their fees approved. So, at the end of the day, council still has to approve and ensure that those fees are comparable to what we would be charging. And I realize it's a very subjective term, but to ensure affordability in the community. So they don't come in with an outrageously priced program and just go willy-nilly on it. So, not that anybody would do that, it's just that we want to ensure the council has, has the ability to approve their fee structure.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
So with this agreement, there still will be the traditional summer recreational programs that the city has traditionally offered and managed. It's just these folks will be doing those programs.
Just baseball?
What about T-ball and all that?
It includes all levels, not competitive level, all recreational levels.
Softball, all that. Because Misty said just baseball.
Sorry, not soccer, not gymnastics.
You can't listen to the finance officer when it comes to sports. No, but, and then the soccer, soccer the same way. Once we get the soccer in, in front of you next, next council, it'll be the same situation.
So are we going to have something like this for gymnastics? Are we going to have gymnastics?
I don't have an answer for you, Deb, right now. I do not have an answer for you. We need private organizations to step forward on this. We've offered it, we've offered several things. The two that are at the top of the list for me of concern right now are gymnastics and swimming. Those two areas, right now I have had not anybody step forward and, and offer to assume that responsibility. And I've, I've offered it to a few groups and nobody's taken advantage of that yet, so.
Any other questions?
If we find a recreation director, will the city be taking these back or will we? Because I noticed that this is written to renew automatically every year without any action.
It's to renew automatically, but we also have 30 days to withdraw and cancel the contract. So if, for some reason, and there's, there's, you know, since we only have, in theory, a part-time recreation director, there's not a whole lot of reason for us to maintain programs that we have organizations that can do. So, then if we have a recreation director, then he or she could focus on other things like gymnastics and swim lessons and other things that we do in summertime. So, you know, we're still trying to get somebody, but we've had no luck yet.
But if we get organizations to do all these, we wouldn't need a recreation director.
That's something that we talked about too, Jeff. The pickleball, the soccer is one of the other ones.
Yeah, pickleball is another one.
Baseball. What was the other one? There was a fourth one?
Swimming. I want to say basketball, but I'm not sure that's true. So, not for some, not for some, sir.
But yeah, like this what you're saying right there, Greg, that's something, yeah.
Any other questions?
Do we have anyone, like last year we had people volunteer to do like the taekwondo and, and outdoor hiking things. And there was some other essential oil classes. And have we had any of those people come forward to?
Nobody come forward. I am going to go out.
Point of order, is this discussion for the rec program, should we hold it somewhere else and vote on this motion? Because we're kind of getting beyond the point of this motion. Sorry, folks.
Oh, apologies, sir. I concur with that.
I'm just going, I want to know where the rec program stands with this and the rest of it.
I understand.
So, yeah, we can go forward and vote.
Do you want me to answer this or let it go for now?
I'd love you to answer it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business, Item E, award 2023 City of Hot Springs Multiple Roof Repair Replacement Projects.
Make a motion to award the 2023 City of Hot Springs Multiple Roof Repair Replacement Projects by location to the following low bidders. Buildright Construction Library Roof Remove Replace $68,998.05. And Southern Hills Golf Course Clubhouse Roof Remove Replace $36,798.096. For total award of $105,797.01. Freedom Construction Mueller Civic Center Metal Roof Only $155,868. Bolt Construction Evans Pumping Station Shingles and Skylights $4,940. And Weathercraft Roofing Inc. City Hall Roof Drain Repair $1,093. Total of all awarded projects $267,698.01.
Second.
Discussion. Talking about the, the Mueller Civic Center Metal Roofs Only, there is a request for proposal to do the remaining roofs on the Mueller Civic Center. So that will come in front of council at a future date. Any other questions? Say again?
It's your next new business item.
That's what we got right here, correct, Misty?
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business, Item F, approve and publish two times the notice to bidders for the 2023 City of Hot Springs Multiple Roof Replacement.
Make a motion to approve and publish two times the notice bidder for the 2023-1 Rebid Water Improvement Project.
Second.
I'm sorry, Phase Two, sorry.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business, Item G, approve and publish two times the notice.
Approve and publish.
Approve and publish two times the notice to bidder for the 2023-1 Rebid Water Improvement Project on Lookout Avenue.
Second.
Discussion. If you remember, the last time the bids came in, they were quite high, and Craig had suggested to Tracy that we go back out for bid excluding the asphalt and seeing if the city could get the asphalt done cheaper. So that's what this rebid is about, is the same project to replace the water line on Lookout Avenue, just to exclude asphalt as part of the work. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business item H. Set a public hearing on April 17th at 7:10 p.m. on the applications for retail on-off sale wine.
I make a motion to set a public hearing on April 17th, 2023, at 7:10 p.m. on the applications for retail on-off sale wine and cider, and retail on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota Farm Wine License from The Kitchen, Inc., LLC, to be used at 745 Jennings Avenue.
Second.
Discussion.
Is that?
The tattoo.
Is that the old Body Count Tattoo location?
Yes.
Okay, because?
They're still going to be there, except in a back corner.
Okay, because the address on Body Count says 741.
Yeah, it's on the, if you're facing American Legion, it's the back right corner.
Okay.
There's a door there, that's where they'll be.
Okay.
And the restaurant will be up front.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business item I. Set a public hearing on April 17th at 7:15 p.m.
Set a public hearing, make a motion to set a public hearing on 4/17/23 at 7:15 p.m. on the use permit on review from Amanda Lewis to establish a home daycare at 1646 Albany Avenue.
Second.
Discussion.
Does she, is she supposed to send out letters to people in that area?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business item J. An automatic budget supplement.
Make a motion to approve an automatic budget supplement of $1,798.50 to the Police Department. Vehicle repairs 101-42100-42510 for repair of Dodge Durango VIN 8391. Total repairs of $2,798.50, less than $1,000 deductible. Revenue received from SDPAA claim GC2023113575.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. On to new business item K. A travel training request from Police Captain Philip Shively.
I make a motion to approve travel training request from Police Captain Phil Shively to attend the neuro shooting system training in the South Dakota Law Enforcement Training Center in Pierce, South Dakota on April 5th of '23.
Second.
Discussion.
I didn't catch the second on that, thank you.
I got a text from Captain Shively on Monday that due to the weather, this particular training had been canceled. I felt that we should leave it on the agenda. It's important training to have. If council's aware that he's going to reapply, and at that point, if he's accepted, then my hope would be this would stand as your approval for him to attend it, so he doesn't have to come back in front, you know, back to you again. So that's the reason I left it here.
So the date to be determined?
Yep.
I'll amend that motion to state that the date is to be determined.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business item L. Travel training, travel training request from Police Officer Justin Richardson.
I make a motion for travel training request from Police Officer Justin Richardson to attend a less lethal instructor training at the Public Safety Center in Dickinson, North Dakota from 42423 to 42823.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business item M. A travel training request from Police Captain Phil Shively.
I make a motion for the travel training request from Police Captain Phil Shively to attend the AFTT Handgun Instructor Development Course at the Criminal Justice Center in Pierce, South Dakota from 43023 to 5523.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business item N. Travel training request from Police Officer Lexi Jo Denneke.
Make a motion to approve travel training request from Police Officer Lexi Jo Denneke to attend the Criminal Patrol Tactics Training in Spearfish, South Dakota for 61323 through 61523.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Brings us to our committee reports. Administrative and Finance, JR?
Okay. Administrative and Finance met Monday, April 3rd at 1 p.m. here at the Mueller Civic Center. Present, Mayor Bob Nelson, Misty Summers Walton, Jeff Temple, Deborah Johnston, Melissa Niles, and JR Huddleston. Public attending, Allison Ritterbush, Jason Heidebrink, and Christine Heidebrink. Old business. Additional costs related to wastewater and wastewater replacement road project ongoing review and discussion necessary. Funding for water wastewater overages, inter-fund loan transfer, nothing new to report. Clothing allowance policy, PD. Utilities maintenance, PPE. Policy is, is coming along good. Jeff has done a lot of good, hard work on this policy, thanks to Jeff. Number three, discuss selling land the city owns. 4.14 acres adjacent to Simon Quarry, seven plus acres north of Hayden's property, 100 plus acres near the Hopbrook Canyon pump station. Ongoing considerations, pending more information. Number four, review utilities. Utility fees must set new rates for 2024 and beyond. Midwest Assistance Program has assisted us in the past, as long as we had an SRF loan. They are, they will assist us again with these fees. New business, is that good, right?
Yes.
Okay. New business, city fees. Allison Ritterbush, Allison Ritterbush, Jason and Christine Heidebrink asked about and discussed the vacant building fees as it pertained to historic sandstone buildings. Buildings discussed were the Bodega Building, Fowler Crumb Building, and the Petty Building. Deb Johnston also mentioned the historic building funds. Number two. Two water employees requesting upgrade to smartphones, $15 a month versus $35 a month. Additional $480 annually, committee agreed for the purchase. Number three, review recommend renewal. City School Facilities Use Agreement option year three, recommend renewal, forward to council for approval. Number four, proposed changes additions to City Hot Springs Personnel Policy exempt remote clarification to holidays and add night differential hours for PD deferred to the next meeting. Number five, proposed fees to charge contractor for use of city resources, labor, and equipment during road construction project, that item is removed from the agenda. Proposed increases to top of steps, review preliminary information, revisit longevity increase percentage, and part-time returning wage increases. Preliminary discussions, more discussions to be held at budget hearings. Number seven, South Dakota PAA 2023 renewal review. Potential to increase general liability, automobile liability, and law enforcement liability from $1 million to $2 million. This is a May renewal. This has been deferred, awaiting more information. And number eight, review monthly financier officer report. Misty went over the finance report, it's in your packet, and no additional committee member items. Meeting adjourned at 2:40. Next meeting is Monday, May 1st at 1 p.m. at the Mueller Civic Center. JR Huddleston Chair.
Any questions for JR? Thank you. Airport Advisory, Bill?
The April meeting, which would, would have been held tomorrow, has been canceled, so our next meeting will be Thursday, May 4th, 8:30 a.m. at the airport.
Thank you.
May I ask a question regarding the lease agreement? Will that be available before the next meeting, or after the revised lease agreement?
At which, available at which meeting?
Will you have a draft available for council by the next meeting, or will you be discussing it at the next airport advisory meeting, and then it'll be on a following council meeting?
Yeah.
Just because we have someone interested in renewing.
Can I answer that later?
Yes.
Thank you.
Custer Fall River Regional Waste Management, Craig?
We did not have a meeting. Next one's?
May 11?
May 11.
7 p.m. at the Mueller Center?
7 p.m. at the Mueller Center.
Any questions for Misty?
I'm thinking Larry wants that back real bad.
I can't talk.
Thank you.
Thank you, Misty.
I only know because of the calendar that Mary puts together, so thank you, Mary.
Historic Preservation, Deborah?
They did not have a meeting in March. The meeting was today for this month, an hour before this meeting, so I will have the report at our next meeting, or our next council meeting. The Preservation Commission meets again May 3rd at 5 p.m. at the Mueller Center.
Thank you for your long day.
Thank you.
Evan's Plunge Advisory, Lynn?
Our next meeting will be April 13th, next Thursday, at noon.
Thank you. Parks, Recreation, Beautification, and Cultural Development, Larry?
The meeting scheduled for today was council in lieu of the weather, but that turned out pretty good. So the next meeting will be May 3rd at 2 p.m. at the Mueller Center. Everyone's invited.
Thank you. Planning and zoning, Deborah?
Planning and zoning met on the 15th of March. Present were Donald Stead, James Forbord, Dwight Weenya, Christine Heidebrink, and Allison Ritterbush. Staff present was Scott Soggy. Guests present were Steve Weenya, Kara Hagan, Mike Summer of the Hot Springs Historic Commission, Todd and Melanie Wilson, and Paul, Robert Paul. And that was at 7 p.m. New business was 1646 Albany Avenue. Amanda Lewis daycare use on review, that was on our agenda tonight for a hearing next committee meeting. The commission sees no issue with a daycare at the Lewis Home. Number two was parcel T007S, Shimonik GRCA zoning and golf course covenants restrictions. This property needs to be identified, the title company should have the description. I got some clarification on that, just for everyone, including myself. This apparently has to do with all the cart paths, and making sure they're all on city property. Apparently, Mr. Shimonik wants to give an area where a bridge between holes number 10 and 11 is. And also, there's a question of property lines at the number 13 tee box, and other areas should really be reviewed, apparently. So Jason at the golf course is getting the plats and reviewing all of these, so that will be something coming back to us for clarification. And then number three was Shimonik Cart Path Transfer Ownership to the City of Hot Springs. And again, that's going to be reviewed by Jason Happy and get more information. And then number four is Subway Sandwich Shop, South Chicago Street Layout and Building Use. Apparently, they're looking to move into the old bank building that's next to the Wells Fargo, and they'll have a drive-up window with that one, and the commission found no issue with the layout. Number five, planning review of the deeded land sold in the City of Hot Springs. There was a detailed conversation about the issues such as water service locations and orphaned buildings that could arise by transferring property without a plat. Requirement is that a plat drawn or redrawn with lot lines revision requested. This in particular was, apparently, there's someone on 23rd Street that wants to buy the adjacent property, and they're telling them that they need to have it replatted, because we have a lot of properties where the infrastructure goes kitty-corner across places and across other people's property, and we need to be clearing this stuff up as this property gets sold and repurposed, and we have to make sure that they go with all the ordinances and the setbacks and such. So that all is being looked into. And then Robert Paul attended the meeting and asked about the process of rezoning his property. Discussion followed of the procedure and the required notifications to the neighbors. Mr. Paul will be asking to be placed on the agenda for next month's April 19th meeting. I guess that's this month now. Old business, Canton Street halt homes, there was no action. Number two, No Worries LLC Dispensary at 112 South Chicago Street. An update on that is that the owners called to the city, the owner called Scott Soggy and stated that they were not going to be opening a dispensary at this time. And then the City of Hot Springs, concerning the daily fine building owners for demolition by neglect or deterioration by neglect ordinances, concerning 243 North River Street, the Johnson Brothers, that's the building to the right of City Hall, the Bodega Building, Lance Reddinger, and the 143 North River Street, which is the Petty Building across the street adjacent to the Ace Hardware. There was a lengthy discussion about these three buildings in peril. The comment was made that the city needs to enforce its ordinance on demolition by neglect and deterioration by neglect. It's been ignored for a long, long time. There were comments stating that this needs to be presented to the admin and finance meeting. The next PNZ is this month, 4/19/23, at 6 p.m. at City Hall.
Are you on 6 p.m. or 7 p.m. now?
I haven't, oh, daylight savings. They usually change with that, don't they? So it'll be 7 p.m., I believe. Oh, yes, here it is in red, at the bottom, sorry.
That's okay.
Wednesday, April 19th, 7 p.m. at City Hall.
Any questions for Deborah?
Dad, what you said about neglect to the buildings, I also, Sinus has got to love him, I also have some concerns about some of the buildings that have ownership in town too, with present-day owners, that some of their buildings need to be looked at because they're leaking and some of the structure is not good, some, maybe it might be good ideal to check into some of those and include it with that, so, just a thought.
If you can come up with addresses, maybe we should be?
I think they all need to be looked at.
They all need to be?
I think they do. Okay? Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Deborah. Thank you, Deborah.
You bet.
Public Safety, Bill, JR?
Public Safety will meet tomorrow, April 6th, 2:00 PM at the Mueller Center Conference Room.
Thank you. Public Works, Craig?
New business. Talked to the owner of Dairy Queen about the food, mobile food truck locations. And it's going to be a little bit of a discussion, I think. But we did talk about maybe having them in the city parks like Centennial, Butler, and the food, food park, food, you know, across from the plunge. That's what we built it for. So I guess it's something that we still need to discuss and talk to our attorney about. See if we can do that with people on private land and stuff. Street, streets and maintenance. The flood wall railing across from Inn by the River, that ain't the name of it, but that's why I know it by, is about 490 feet. And we're getting free bids to put it up. It's going to be a chain link fence. And it's going to be attached to the road right in front of the wall. But the chain link is going to be at the top of the wall. That way, it won't catch garbage and stuff. The annual burning of the brush pile. Need to finish the paperwork and send it in. Do we have to send that in or just file it, tell them and file it?
Yeah, should be maintained at City Hall.
We file it ourselves.
Okay. Stewart Extension on Alley West of 19th is done. Most people ought to have a nice flowing sewer now. Alley view drainage improvement. We talked about that with Billy. And as soon as we can get on it, but we're going to start at the bottom and go top, to the top. Billy thinks that's the best way to put it in.
He knows it.
It is up to him. Replacement sewer in Baltimore Avenue. They're going to start planning to do that in the next two months. The city is going to do that themselves. Trimming trees and alleys, ongoing thing, Billy said. They're still doing that as time permits. Albany Boardwalk Hill. It's our understanding Billy got a bid for doing that concrete work for us. So hopefully, I'll be starting when they can get to it. And then we'll have to get Simons or something to do the asphalt work. And then we'll, we're going to leave the road closed until all this gets done. And then when it's done, we're going to clean the road real good. And hopefully, it'll hold up under all the weight and stuff. The intersection in Albany and Baltimore, the leveling, that'll get done as the road project gets to it. And they'll, I guess they got to jack up some of the concrete they poured or re-pour it because it's settled. But then the road behind it's a problem area. And they're going to fix that one time, when they get to that part of the project. The Summit Road, it's an ongoing, but signs up. We really can't afford to build a wall there right now with everything going on. So that's just kind of on hold. We can look at ADA ramps at Massadental, Centennial Park, and Vision Source. I think Billy's going to talk to the gentleman that might do the concrete up here for us in Albany and see if he'd have time to do something like that. They said that they need a diagram of what we want, you know, instead of just say, well, cut this hot out and put the concrete in. They want to know the exact dimensions that we want on the concrete. And I think Tracy's going to work on that. Irrigation at the depot, North River Street. The one across from Lintecode March been put on hold till next fall because they don't think the road project will get done down there until next year. The one at the Centennial Park, we're going to try to get it done this year, this summer, spring, whatever. And the depot, Tracy and the guys from the War Department's going to try to get that done themselves. Flagpole Centennial Park is on hold until Billy has time to do it. Repairs to stairs has to be done by June. Billy says he hopes he can get to it. He said he's going to work on it. It's about the best he can do with the time he has. Okay. The fire hydrant pressure, we're taking it out on bids again. The way we looked at, we looked at, you know, if the city did it, we'd have to replace the asphalt ourselves. So that's why I came up with the idea of we bid it out since we don't have time to do the work and have somebody do the pipe and stuff. And then we can, this fall, with our money, hopefully, we got enough in our road funds and stuff to replace the ditch. All depends on how much we get done, if they do both projects or just the one. Hail the roof, we did that tonight. Wayfinding signs, we talked about it. Kara Hagan was there and gave us what she thought about it. And it's going to be ongoing and it'll come to the council eventually and see what everybody wants to do. But there is, the ones that talked about it, kind of want to go with what the signs coming in, all four signs that come into town, the Hot Springs signs. With the blue and, blue letters and the brown mountain, it looks like a mountain range behind it. And other signs are the same way, like Eumaker Park and the one down there by the gazebo and stuff. They're all basically the same. So we're going, we're thinking about that. But like I said, it's up to everybody, not just us. We talked about the Fall River cleanup. We talked about those, those hybrid weed eaters. And that's about it. Our next meeting will be April 11th, 1:00 PM at the Mueller Center.
Any questions for Craig?
I have one. Shouldn't that chain link fence idea be put past the Historic Preservation Commission? Because you're trying to put a chain link on top of a historic wall?
It's not going to be on top of the wall.
Well, it's going to be affecting the look of the historic wall in the historic downtown.
What would the historical committee want there?
Something that matches the rest of the walls.
Sandstone?
Well, there's also those, those metal...
And we couldn't?
Those metal tops that are bolted to the top of the wall.
We can't bolt that to the top of the wall. That's concrete and you'll break the wall. If you drill those holes, you can break the wall.
And that wall's part of the flood channel also.
And what Tracy said, if we put a iron fence there, it, why do you say they have to be four inches apart? So no, wasn't it four inches?
Yes.
Apart, this way and this way, so no child can get their head through there?
Right.
There ain't no way the city can afford a solid wall 490 feet of iron. So we is going with the most reasonable way. Seems out they've been asking about the wall because three dogs has jumped over that already. So...
So how tall is that going to be?
Well, I think we're going to go about four foot above the wall. With the chain, the post will be set and then the chain link will be four foot. The posts, like regular chain link.
And so the chain link won't go all the way down to the ground? So it won't collect garbage?
It'll be right to the top of the wall.
Okay. So it won't collect garbage?
And if historical, if you guys want to get a grant or something, put a wall up there of metal, we will, we'll do it if you guys can come up with money.
My concern if that wall is part of the flood channel wall, we need to, we need to also consider that. And we just can't be putting, drilling holes into that because that'll, that'll affect the substructure down through the concrete wall. So that's something to think about also.
And the problem with the wall is it comes to a peak. And you'd have to put iron to slope with the peak and drill through both sides and the top of your concrete. And it's not very thick and you're going to break it. Especially as many holes as you'd have put in it, it wouldn't last.
I'm glad you asked the question, Deborah. I think it's appropriate that, because as Historic Preservation and as a community, we would require the same thing of someone else who's making any kind of modifications or whatever in our historic district, that we hold ourselves to the same standards and take a look at it. Listening to the conversation, one thing that didn't come to mind when we were talking about attaching to the top of the wall for the reasons that Craig and Larry have cited, because it's not a flat surface, it's an angled surface, you know, that raises the difficulty. But the other thing that just came to mind as we were talking about it is the railing that the state will be putting in on the flood wall from the end of our sidewalk, our suspended sidewalk to Menacata. They are attaching that to the top of the wall. But the method that the state is using had to be approved by the Corps of Engineers. So it goes to them because we're drilling into their wall.
Right.
So that would be the same consideration. So...
So my question to that would be, why can't we put that same, whatever they're going to do along that wall so it matches?
Yeah. And it's not a matter that we can't, it's what will you choose to afford? The chain link is going to be the least expensive. But I, again, it's appropriate that we have the conversation, that we get some, some costs and figure out what are we going to do? It is a safety issue. And council knows well what our financial situation is. And we need to come up with some resolution for that wall. So...
And the difference between the wall that the state's doing and ours is the wall down where they're doing it, it's flat on top. Theirs don't come to a peak. So it'd be a different kind of metal that got put up.
Well, I've seen bracing that has a slanted with the pole welded at the straight angle. So it would only need to be one hole from one direction.
And I hear what you're saying, but I concur with what the mayor said to his point. If we're going to do something on the wall, then we need to get the Corps of Engineer involved with that.
Right. I agree. It's a requirement.
Well, yeah, I'm aware of that.
But I'm also thinking about, you know, what we do today is going to affect Hot Springs 100 years from now. And choosing the cheapest point, way to do it is not always the right way to do it.
And I suggest this goes back to the committee and have that conversation with them.
So I had a question, Craig. Is this chain link wall going to be on both sides of the river?
No.
Just a question about what?
The other side already has a wall, fence of. It don't meet regulations, but it's a fence.
It's got that pipe.
Because if, if you put up a new wall, you have to do like Tracy said. And they have to be, you know, to where kids can't stick their heads through and stuff. Hi Kara.
Hi. Kara Hagan, 2035 Spring Avenue. And I would just like to ask council to pre, please bring it to the Historic Preservation Commission. Because we try to run all those things through the historic district, through the commission. And if we don't use the commission, what is the commission for?
Thank you, ma'am.
And, and my response to Deborah, that's what I'd said, is that's what we need to do. That's what we will do. We need to hold ourselves to the same standard we would anybody else. So we'll do that.
Thank you, Kara.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Craig.
No problem.
Southern Hills Golf Course, Jeff?
The last meeting was held last night in the snow at the golf course. General discussion regarding new digital marketing system that is part of the dynamic pricing structure that we both purchased. The discussion, as every month, is regarding the wall. And we are still seeking contractors to get the work done. The goal is to have it done before the spring, well, before summer. It's still our goal, a little unrealistic probably, but we're trying. The new aerator will be doing double duty after Jason finishes his soil testing. We had a long discussion about spring startup and maintenance priorities until, can't do anything until the snow melts. Once the weather cooperates, the golf course anticipating a strong season with implementation of online tee times and tournament scheduling. The next meeting is 3 May, 1800 at the Golf Course Clubhouse. Subject to your questions on golf. Then let's move into city administrators. Snow crews have been putting in long hours, as we all know. Received a very complimentary letter from Ms. Rachel Witcher several weeks ago from the Hair Care Center thanking the team for all their hard work and the care for the road in that area. It's nice to see the crews recognized sometimes beyond us. On a related note, we have both of our large plow trucks that went down this morning after a hard night's work. The team is trying to revive them now. We're praying we have no more major storms this year. Last but not least, this will answer Deborah's question. We are in the process of designing an ad for the paper that will be soliciting for contract instructors for the summer, regardless of whether we have a recreation director or not. And that's all I've got, subject to your questions.
Any questions for Jeff? Thank you, Jeff. Finance Officer, Misty?
Thank you, Mayor. I provided you financial reports through the 30th of March. Same reports you're used to seeing, your profit-loss summary by fund. Has six of 11 funds with expenditures exceeding revenues. But we're used to seeing that early in the year. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have regarding any of those numbers. Our fund summary report, which shows you how we're doing compared to our budget, is attached. Our cash balance for our main Wells Fargo checking account by fund is attached. And then investment reports by institution and investment types. Those reports include all of the cash assets of the city. I finalized the 2022 audit pre-work and annual report preparation. I've calculated, posted all the necessary adjusting journal entries. And I've prepared the annual report. What I'm working on now is the annual report notes, or as I like to refer to them, the story that accompanies all the numbers. The presentation format of this report is prescribed by the South Dakota Department of Legislative Audit. It's designed to be user-friendly and easily comparable to other municipalities. The report will be submitted to you, the governing body, no later than the first meeting in May. It will get published in the official newspaper and posted on the city website. Our audit field work is scheduled to begin the week of April 10th and will be two full weeks due to the required single audit for 2022. Our goal, once again, is to have the audit complete for a full readout and council acceptance no later than the second meeting in June. The deadline for submitting nominating petitions was last week. Five petitions were submitted by the deadline. And based on those submissions, we'll once again have a municipal election. Petitions submitted include Ward 1, Craig Romi and Hal Glanville; Ward 2, Travis Borback; Ward 3, Linda Varvel; and Ward 4, Deborah Johnston. Ward 1 voters are the only ones to vote in the municipal election in 2023. The city combined our election with the Hot Springs School District and they will also have a race. The election date is June 6th. Now is the time to check your voter registration and also to encourage voter participation. Voter registration information is available at the auditor's office at the Fall River County Courthouse. The last day to register to vote for the 2023 municipal election is Monday, May 22nd by 5:00 PM. Absentee ballots will be available May 22nd through June 5th. We'll have administrative leave days Friday, April 7th and Monday, April 10th. City offices will be closed. We hosted the SDML Annual District 9 Meeting. Thank you for attending. Those of you that did, it was an enjoyable evening with a wonderful meal, good company, and great information. It was an enjoyable evening with a wonderful meal, good company, and great information. The American Legion Ladies Auxiliary and more specifically Jeanne Harper were fantastic to work with. And between those ladies and the ladies at the Municipal League, specifically Sarah Rankin and Lisa Nold, I must say that hosting this year's event was a very easy thing to do. Thank you, Craig, for volunteering us to host and for all your help with the location and meal decisions and the door prizes. Thank you again to all of the door prize sponsors and also to the surprise servers, the Hot Springs Claybusters. Next year, we'll travel to Hill City for the event. I am preparing for the project and expenditure reporting required by the U.S. Treasury in relation to the coronavirus state and local recovery fund dollars that the city received in 2020 and 2021. As with the first reporting round, there will be an online portal. It opened April 3rd. Reportings due no later than April 30th. The city reported all $633,322 as reimbursement of municipal employee salary and wage expenses and claimed the standard revenue loss under $10 million allowance, which provided major simplification in meeting compliance and regulatory responsibilities. It's my hope that this will be the last round of reporting required for our city. We did receive on March 24th the electronic copies of our annual drinking water report. The City of Hot Springs has supplied 20 consecutive years of safe drinking water to the public it serves and has been awarded the Secretary's Award for Drinking Water Excellence by the South Dakota Department of Agricultural and Natural Resources. The report is a snapshot of the quality of water that we provided last year. Included are details about where the water comes from, what it contains, and how it compares to EPA and state standards. We serve more than 3,395 customers, an average of 813,000 gallons of water per day. The state assessment of our source water has determined that the relative susceptibility rating for the public water system is low. The full report is available on the city website if you're interested. The next time you're in City Hall, please welcome Natalie Selner, our new City Hall Administrative Assistant. The position will primarily support the development coordinator and, as needed, other departments with secretarial, advanced clerical, and routine administrative work.
That was a slight to my administrative skills.
She has a wealth of experience working in a variety of business offices, wearing other titles such as business manager, office manager, secretary, support specialist, and human resources. There'll be a lot to learn, but she comes to us highly qualified and she's very excited for the opportunity to live and work in Hot Springs and we're equally as excited to have her. Please remember that the finance office doors are always open and we encourage questions. Council has a big job and are charged with the power and duty to make decisions for the whole city. It's extremely important to keep in mind that although a municipality has many powers, there are almost always conditions and restrictions on the use of those powers. Forty of the 50 states ours included applies the principle known as Dillon's Rule, which says that local governments may only exercise powers expressly granted by the state, powers necessarily and fairly implied from the grant of power, and powers crucial to the existence of local government. It's important that elected officials fully review and understand those powers as well as all city policies, procedures, and our financial position. If there's ever any information you need to be more comfortable with that responsibility, I encourage you to seek it out. If you have suggestions for additional information that should be made to council members, please be sure to let someone know. And thank you for all the work you do to keep moving our city forward. On Thursday, March 30th, the South Dakota Transportation Commission awarded the City of Hot Springs a big replacement grant for our Menacata Bridge. They'll be sending the grant application paperwork for our approval shortly and we're real excited about that replacement, so...
Yay!
That's all I have.
Any questions for Mr. T? Thank you. There's always a risk when I thank all of the city employees that I miss somebody, though this truly is for all of the employees, even if I don't speak to them or their positions directly. Since the road reconstruction, there's been a lot of turmoil. Maybe that's not the right word, maybe that's too strong. But there's been a lot that the city employees have had to deal with. City Hall often gets calls regarding what's going on with the road reconstruction. And with our recent snow event Jeff had talked about, we now have, we're down two plow trucks. The city street departments, when it comes to snow and the work that they put into helping the contractor get our road rebuilt for us, the water department, the sewer department, these folks are constantly busy. I'm surprised that they can keep up with the workload. They do the best they can and I just can't thank them enough. What they do for the city is tremendous. Again, I hope that I don't exclude anybody, but the city staff receives a lot of calls and the street department is doing a heck of a lot of work out there. So as Jeff had mentioned, and I'd sent a letter from Rachel Whitaker to council, we do get acknowledgement from the public. I wish we'd get more, but I wanna thank them for everything that they do. So with that, I need a motion to go into executive session.
I make a motion, we go into executive session in accordance with South Dakota Codified Law 1-25-21 personnel and three legal contracts.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes and there will be no action taken after executive session. There will be a pause before we resume an executive session. So if we round it off, we're back at 9:54. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Have a good snowy evening.